Welcome back everyone to Common Sense Choices and I'm Lynda Tupin. Welcome to episode number 20. I can't believe we've done 20 episodes, but for those of you who have been with me on this journey all the way since December the 2nd, 2021, thank you. It is because of you that our show is growing by leaps and bounds. It is your likes, your comments and shares that really propel it forward. So be sure to do that because your name is entered into a drawing when you do. Well, God has gifted you 168 hours this week and what you do with those 168 hours is what you end up with your life. And during those hours, every single day, you'll make 35,000 choices. I know people are shocked to learn that. That's why you're tired when you go to bed at night, but it is those little insignificant choices that may not seem like a really big deal that accumulate. Everything in our life accumulates and sometimes that's good and sometimes that's bad, but I thank you for clicking play because when you click play, that was a choice. And that is, that is very dear to me. In fact, I actually pray before every episode that something I say here will lift you, encourage you, edify you and challenge you. And so our podcast is called Common Sense Choices. It's based on the mantra that you see over behind my shoulder on that seven foot piece of art. And it is, "I am where I am by the choices I have made or I have allowed others to make for me." Now that takes on a whole new meaning when we start talking about our children and the choices that are made for them. And so that mantra can be found over at our home base at www.lindatupin.com. And over there I have a concierge service and I encourage you to take advantage of it. By signing up, I'll actually bring you the episode every Thursday night at 7:00 PM. It'll be delivered into your inbox. Now, if you're on your laptop, the sign in button is up in that upper right hand corner. If you're on your laptop, the sign in button is on the left hand corner. Now remember it's a two step system. Every single week somebody says, "Lynda, I signed up, but I'm not getting them." It is because we sent you an email immediately upon signing up that you had to confirm. So go on over to your junk or your spam or your promotions tab and find me. Just search Common Sense Choices. I bet I'm there. If not, sign up again. It's no big deal. We would love to have you and I'd love to deliver those episodes. Well, while you're over there, we have a souvenir store with our mantra on it. And over there you're going to find a coffee mug and my guest speaker a little bit later on will show you. She has her coffee mug because that's a perk of being my guest speaker. And we also have an eight by eight canvas print with the mantra on it. Now I am excited to tell you today, we have a brand new item over at our store and it'll come up on the screen. It's a little two and a quarter by two and a quarter kitchen magnet. Just something fun and easy for you to put around your home or in your office with our mantra on it. So go over and check it all out. Now remember you guys, that anytime that you order five of one item, five of one item, you will get a 20% discount by using the discount code LT, like Lynda Tupin, LT20. Now, I do want to tell you, if you've got some girlfriends and people that are going to use these as incentives or awards or gifts or whatever, and you've got some girlfriends can go together and get 15 of this print. We can have it shipped directly from the manufacturer and there's no shipping charge. I don't know if y'all know this or not, but shipping is a big deal these days. Shipping is a really big deal. So anyway, check it out. Well, at every episode, we have a winner. Now remember you get your name in the drawing by liking, commenting and sharing. So what kind of things should you comment? Now you may be listening on Apple or Spotify or you're driving, so don't be commenting. Okay? Hands on the wheel, nine and three, eyes straight ahead. Just enjoy the conversation. But if you're in a place that you can comment, why don't you tell me if it's your first time? I'd love to welcome you. All right? If this is not your first time, maybe tell me how many episodes you've seen or approximately of the 20, or maybe where you live, or what you're doing while you're listening. Maybe you're out for a walk or you're working out at the gym or you're folding laundry. I don't know. Or maybe you just got your feet propped up and you're listening. That's okay too. But be sure to comment often and frequently because your name goes in the drawing every time that you comment. And since our topic is school choice, maybe you could comment with what were some of your school choices for your children or the ones that you're making? And were they different now that COVID has happened? So anyway, so let's have a drum roll please. And our winner from episode number 17, which was Dr. Lena Edwards, my integrative functional doctor. It's incredible episode. Like I'm going to get in everybody's face and make sure everybody in America watches that episode because it literally will change your life. If you have a woman in your life that you love, please make her watch that episode. Anyway, our winner from that episode is Sherri Coleman. Sherri lives in Crescent Springs, Kentucky, and she'll get a gift from Lindatupin.com. So congratulations Sherri. Be looking for that gift. All right. Well, let's get caught up here and then let's meet our guest speaker. If you're new to the podcast, episodes one through four dealt with mental health, which was kind of an important thing coming out of COVID. Episodes five through seven was on physical health. Episodes eight through 16 was a long two month series. What does it truly take to work from home? A lot of people had to come home from their jobs during COVID and work from their home. And it's not as glamorous and easy as it may sound, but in those episodes eight through 16, I have a wealth of people who have literally hundreds of years combined of working from home successfully, on setting boundaries and creating office space and a mental attitude. I mean, it's just an incredible series. So be sure and check it out if you're working from home or if you're running your own business. And then episode number 17, as I've already said, was my integrative personal functional doctor who I have trusted with my health for 14 years. She is responsible for my great health. So please check out episode number 17 with her. And then this month, episodes number 18, 19, and today, and also next week, will focus on children. You would have had to live under a rock the past two years not to know that the hottest cultural and political topic in our country is children and school choice. And I do want to say to all of you before we meet our guest speaker, because she embodies what I've been saying all along. Guys, I know sometimes the world can be overwhelming and we can think, how can so many institutions in our country be so flawed and so broken? But it is people like our guest speaker that we're getting ready to meet that gives us hope for our country. Guys, we can't change what happens in Washington DC and we cannot change and make a difference what happens in our state capitals, but we can make a difference locally. And when we make a difference locally, whether it's in our churches, our schools, or our community, or our local elections, then that other stuff at the state and national level will change when we have better people representing us on a local level. And so if there are things that you're seeing out there in the world that just makes you want to like pull the sheet over your head and think, "I can't fight this battle," yes, you can fight this battle. And that's why you are going to meet my very special guest speaker today and let's bring her on the air. Would you please welcome my good friend, Crystal Bar. Hey Crystal, good morning.
Good morning.
How are things in Pennsylvania, my friend?
Good. I, I thought summer was coming, but it feels like winterish spring out there right now, but you know.
I had my fireplace on before the show started and I thought, well, I'm wearing a white jacket to symbolize spring. Weird with my fireplace on. What, you got your coffee mug, girl?
I do. Lipstick stained and everything.
You know what? It is so true. And I think last week, you know, we've had four women on who have made other school choices and they had the same problem. Maybe we just like our lipstick. What can I say? Well, Crystal, tell us a little bit about your school journey, you know? Those who have watched previous episodes, I won't go back into it. I grew up in a two room school, public school system, all the way through the sixth grade, then to a middle school in the public school system, high school, and then in college, went to Eastern Kentucky University, and then I became a public school home economics teacher. So all my background is in public schools. Now my children went to a Catholic school, but obviously today we're talking about public schools. And so tell us your particular journey and that of your husband.
Yes. So I grew up in public schools K through 12, actually the same school that I, the district that I live in and that my children go to school to. So didn't move too far away. I felt strongly that this was a great school district. And when we moved back to Pittsburgh, my husband's also from Pittsburgh, and when we moved back to Pittsburgh from Kentucky, that was a little point of contention because he wanted to go to his school district and I wanted to go to mine and they're only like 20 minutes apart and I won. Yeah. So, but he also went through public schools, like I said, 20 minutes away from here, K through 12. We had great experiences. I feel strongly about the public school system. His family actually has several public school teachers within it. I do not, but I just, I had a great experience with the public school district. And like I said, the district that we're in, I felt was a great one to raise my, my, my family in.
That's wonderful. I mean, that is wonderful.
Yeah. And then afterwards we continued to just a local community college because my husband and I, and that's actually where we met. My husband and I are both pilots and we're very blessed that just a half an hour up the road, we have one of the best aviation programs in the country. And so I actually am the acting chief pilot up there right now. So in a way I'm still kind of in public education.
Well, I, that gives me great confidence to know that the person flying that plane would be you, my friend. Just because I have so much trust in you as a mom and as a person. Well, that's awesome. Now what about your children? I'm assuming they went to a public school as well and tell us.
They are, yeah, I have two kids. I have a 14 and a half year old. She's currently in eighth grade at the local school district. And then I have a 16 and a half year old and he's just finishing up his sophomore year. They've been enrolled in the public school district from first through, well, they'll finish in fall. But I did have them in private, just you know, like the local preschool and I had them there for kindergarten because our public school district didn't have full day kindergarten yet. So I kept them at the little private preschool with like 10 kids that for kindergarten. But after that, they got enrolled in public school and have been there ever since.
Awesome. Well, we were talking before we came on the air and now you have someone driving, which could also put the fear of God in you. But it also helps you once that they are, I have to tell you a funny story. I remember when my son, he's the oldest of my two children, he started driving. And I think the rules in Indiana at that time was that you had to, you had to ride with a, somebody for so many months and you couldn't carry anybody else. Okay?
Right.
Like you couldn't take other children. I don't remember the particular rules, but one night my husband and I decided to go to Cracker Barrel for dinner. And we walked in and there was my son and all of his friends and he had, he had driven them and I was like, and he's a rule follower. Anyway, it's all fun. It's all fun. So I'm going to assume up until the word COVID entered our vocabulary, you were extremely pleased with what you were seeing in the classroom.
Yes, in the classroom, yes. The district as a whole, I actually was pursued for about five years to run for school board. I'm a very active member of our community, growing up here, knowing a lot of people. And I just kept pushing it off, pushing it off. But as far as what was in the actual classroom, for the most part, I didn't have any problems. You know, you always question things here and there and that's going to be in public or private. I don't care where you are. But for the most part, I was, I was pleased what was being taught to my children.
Okay. Well, that's good. That's very good because you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of things out there in the classroom across the nation that's causing a great deal of alarm and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But so, so they pursued you for five years and that makes sense because you're an active member of the community. You grew up there, people knew you, et cetera. So what prompted you then to run for school board and when did you run?
So in the spring of 2021, COVID hit. When I saw how our school board handled it that summer and going back to school in the fall of 2020, I was extremely disappointed. I was disappointed that they weren't listening to the parents. I was disappointed that, I mean, we had school board members flat out telling our parents and taxpayers, "If you don't like it, move." Those were the exact words. Yes. And I sat there and I, it just, it weighed on my heart. And I just said, you know, for five years I've been asked to do this. This is the time. I've always been taught by my mother to stand up for those that can't speak for themselves. And I've done that in a lot of areas of my life. I've led a lot of fundraisers for domestic violence and just helped fight for the people that can't speak for themselves. And this was my time, my opportunity to do that for our children and for the, the parents that don't have the voice like I do. I'm not scared to speak up and say, "Call somebody out when it's wrong." And so I felt with my name, with my background in the community, this was the time to do it. And so I made that decision in the summer of 2020, but we didn't have an election until that next year. So a lot of it was just prep work. In Pittsburgh, the way, well, in the state of Pennsylvania, actually, the way it's done is you run on both sides of the ticket. Meaning you don't run as a Democrat or a Republican, you run as both. And so unless people do their homework, they don't really know what you are, which in my opinion, when it comes to school board, that's how it should be. Politics shouldn't play a part in our school. And so a lot of the way it's done in our community is in teams because we have nine school board members. So one term you have four school board members up and the next term you have five school board members up. So a lot of times they will run as a team of four or a team of five. And so those first couple of months was just kind of finding my team. Who did I trust to put my name with? Who did I feel that I would want to work with and represent our children and our taxpayers in the best way possible? And so that took place from like July through January of 2020. And then it was time to get our petitions and, and move forward. And then, so we did all of that because people don't realize either. It takes money to run a campaign, even a school board campaign. As silly as it is, those signs that you see in people's yards, you're talking $5 a sign. And that's because you're not getting hundreds of thousands of them like big campaigns are. You're only getting a couple of hundreds. They're more expensive. And so you've got to do some fundraising and stuff like that and people don't want to invest. But these are your children. These are the people representing your children and your voice. And you've got to invest in your school board campaigns. And so a lot of the process was, was doing that. And then you have the primaries and we had a special case in, in our district. And then, so it ended up being five of us on the ticket because we had somebody that moved away and so we had to fill her spot then. And so you basically run as a team, like I said, and it kind of makes it nice for like door knocking. We would laugh. We literally would drive down the street in a minivan and the doors would be open and we would like, like if people didn't know what was going on, they were like, "What's going on in our neighborhood?" My husband would drive it and like all of a sudden you'd see four of us jump out and like two of us go to this house, two of us over here. Lots of door knocking, lots of just meeting the public because it's, it's disappointing how little research people do on the school board. We're more concerned with the primaries that just happened, the midterms that just happened or the presidential election. People don't get involved in the local elections and they literally show up the day of the election and whoever their local party committee tells them to vote for, that's what they do. They don't know anything about these people.
Wow. Wow.
Yeah.
Well, I can, how many people, how many people were in your district that you were running? How many, what's the population?
So I want to say when I looked, we have about 21,000 registered voters. So the day of the election, like the primaries, I think we had about 2,500 votes.
Okay.
Because some people will skip over the school board section part, you know, they'll do what they feel is important. So it happened, the election that we had, we had 39 county judges running. And we did have a lot of ballot voters come out because on our ballot, we had some stuff with COVID with our governor. So that brought people out, but as far as people voting on the school board, it was about 2,500 out of 21,000 is all that voted. And yeah, and that was in the primaries. So in the fall, I still, I want to say I had like 3,300 votes. It's, that's what I mean. People don't get involved in the local elections and those are the ones that matter.
Yes, yes, they, they truly do. So, so you won. I think we need to tell the audience that you won.
I did by like 15 points. It was, it was awesome. Those, those mail in ballots though, gave me a little bit of a heart attack at first. I won't lie. I left the, the polling district and you know, they, they had already started opening up the mail in ballots and I saw I was down by like 1,500 votes. And I remember having like a little like panic attack and my friend said, "Crystal, those are just the mail in ballots. Those aren't going to go to you anyway." I was like, "Oh, okay." And then as the night went on, I mean, it didn't take long and we just, it was a landslide. My entire team, all five of us, boom.
Wow. That, well, that, that, that's exciting. That's encouraging. So you knocked on doors. What, what did you say? I mean, what, what, what was your, what was your pitch?
Well, I'm knocking on your door and we need to answer. And a lot of times I knew where people stood when they answered. And like I said, I grew up in this community, so I did recognize a lot of the names. It was kind of funny. Some of them were parents of kids that I graduated with and stuff like that. Or now it's the kid, you know, people I actually graduated with. And so when I would, when they'd answer the door, I'd say, "Hi, my name's Crystal Bar. I'm running for Moon area school board and I would love to know what are the questions or concerns that you have regarding our school district." And I would let them tell me because some people didn't, like if they didn't have kids in the district, they, they didn't really care how the district handled COVID. They want to know about their taxes, you know? And then I had some people were like, the first question out of their mouth is, "Are you going to take these masks off these kids?" That was like, that was all they cared about. And then I would say the top two questions were the mask and CRT. They wanted to know our feelings on CRT. Top two questions.
So, so there wasn't really anybody or not very many people didn't have an opinion when you asked people.
No, no. I mean, you would get some people that say, "Well, I don't have kids in the school district." And my response back to that is, "But you pay taxes. You have just as big of a dog in the fight." You have a say and where your tax dollars are used towards.
Wow.
Absolutely.
Well, that is exciting and congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you.
When did you all actually get seated, I guess is the word, on the board? When did that happen?
We got sworn in on December 6th of 2021.
So it's just in the past six months?
Yep.
Okay. So now that you're officially a school board member, how often do you all meet?
We meet on the second and fourth Mondays of every month. In December, we only meet once because of the holidays. And so, and then we had to cancel one in April because of spring break. We realized that we were on spring break and everybody's going to be there. But typically twice a month, we do like an executive session beforehand where it's just the school board members, our solicitor and our superintendent, and then if we need to bring in any other administration. And those are typically discussions about, or why I shouldn't say typically, they always are discussions about personnel, real estate and any kind of lawsuits, stuff that can't be discussed in the public. And then after that executive session, we go into public session and that's where we go through our regular agenda.
And have those been well attended?
No, it's, it's really sad.
That is interesting. That is interesting.
It's kind of sad because these are your children. These are your tax dollars. Since we've taken over, we've had two meetings that were really well attended and those were over the mask. You know, it was the one where we, we called an emergency meeting and we, so we have a school district of about 3,900 kids. And so we called an emergency meeting to vote on the mask and I remember sitting there, we moved it to the auditorium because we were, we normally have a board room. This is when we moved to the auditorium because we expected a larger group. And I remember sitting there and trying to count and I counted 69 people and that was considered a larger meeting. So then that was in December. In January, right before the masks were then going to be removed, we, we had another larger group. However, it wasn't, we had that in a regular board meeting and there were still empty chairs. And after that, if we have five people at a meeting that aren't district employees, because we'll have, you know, depending on what the topic is tonight, like usually our HR person is there. We always have a tech person there and stuff like that. But those are district employees. Outside of that, if we have five, I'm shocked, absolutely shocked.
So what have you learned about the running of a public school system that maybe surprised you? Or maybe just affirmed something you already suspected?
So like the school board, I don't think people realize, and I certainly didn't realize, we don't have anything to do with the day to day. We set the policy and it's the job of the superintendent to follow and enforce that policy that we set. Like we'll have an ambulance on the, on the campus and people will text me and go, "What's going on?" I didn't even know it was there. Like we're not really, we're not involved in the day to day. You know, certainly there's, there are things that our superintendent makes us aware of, especially now because our, a lot of our board have children in the buildings where they didn't before. And I think that makes a big difference because we have a little bit more hands on. We see, you know, we have our kids coming home. My, my kids, sometimes I have to be like, "I don't want to hear this." Like that's not my job. You, it's not any different, you know? Um, and so we just, we don't deal with the day to day stuff. It's just really instructive deciding on policy and making sure that the superintendent enforces that. And we have a great superintendent that really, we, we work as a board of 10, really.
So you mentioned that a school board member is not running on either Republican, Democrat, or independent platform. That, that's, you know, unless you do your research, you don't know. Does politics play a role?
Unfortunately, yes, it does. It absolutely does. You know, we're, we're a board of nine technically and we're kind of split. We have probably five, five and a half Republicans, maybe six. And we don't all vote together all the time, but we have some that will absolutely vote just because that's the way, they want to make a stance. It's actually kind of funny. There's times and you can probably read our faces when we see if somebody vote one way or another. We're all like, "Why did they do that?" And it's all politically driven. It's, which is sad because these are our children.
Right, right. Cause I know that when I interviewed you, when I was looking for someone to interview and, and we talked about how, you know, it's so important in today's very volatile political situation that, that the people with common sense that are in the middle of the bell curve have got to step up to the plate and bring sanity to the extreme. Because there's extremes on both sides of this aisle. And unfortunately, that's what the news reports on is if it's extremely left or extremely right, you're going to hear about it. Well, 80% of us or probably even more are in the middle and we're just like, we just need some people with some sense that makes logic, you know? So, so that's, that's interesting because I was curious how political it really was.
Yeah, it, there's, there's definitely games that go on and that was stuff that I always suspected because you could kind of see it. Just, I mean, like I said, we had nine school board members. Most didn't even have kids in the district. Like, I mean, what are you, what are you serving on a school board for 20 years for when you don't have children in the district? And never did.
I did hear that a lot from other people that I interviewed beforehand about that. There were like, people have been on these boards for 20 and 30 and 40 years. And you know, let's just put two and two together. There's contracts, there's buildings, there's money flowing. And you know, you have to add two and two together to get four there is why they're sitting on a board that has that kind of power. So that's interesting. That's very interesting. Well, I'm glad to know that you all have some fresh blood in there.
Yes, the fresh blood is really nice. It's, our superintendent might not, he thinks we drive him crazy right now because we're, we're, we're hungry. We're new, we're excited. And he said, this is his first time bringing on five new board members. He's like, "It's a lot of work." Because you know, we have a million questions and I'm sure we're all kind of asking the same questions and stuff like that. Because the other thing that people don't realize is the five of us, the five new board members, we can't meet and talk and say, "Hey, I found this out." Because that makes up a quorum. And so the five of us alone can't discuss anything unless there's other people present. So I am sure that we asked him a lot of the same questions, um, five different times, just because we're just new and hungry and excited. We wanted some change for our children. We wanted some accountability.
So discuss that. I would be curious as to what you all are asking for that's different.
Well, so three of our new board members all have a background in finance. Well, so three of our new board members all have a background in finance. So they really wanted to dig into like the budget and stuff like that. And they're just asking questions like, well, explain to me this and this, you know, that kind of stuff. Why are we spending money on this? And the other thing is, public money is so much different than a private sector, you know? For, for example, our one school board member is a public or, uh, an investor, a, uh, financial advisor. And you know, he sees all this money and thinking to himself, well, can we invest this? Can we do this and this? And no, there's rules around public money. And so, uh, which makes sense, it makes sense, but when you, you're not involved in that, you don't think about that. And so it was a great, I think they spent like two or three hours discussing some things as to what can and cannot be done with, with public money. Which I think it kills him because he says, use all this money and opportunity, but not, unfortunately, nothing can be done with it. But I'm not your pod.
That's okay, it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a, I have a question because, and, and this isn't our topic today, but it's happening around the nation. We just heard from homeschoolers and there's five million now in America, so they're pulling them from the public school. Uh, we have a lot of legislation, legislature going on now around the nation to fund the kids and not the system so that parents, you know, like you said, there's, they're your tax dollars, you can take them wherever.
Hold on, my, my dog's trying to eat my AirPod, hold on.
I love it.
Okay, I'll just put that back in here for safekeeping. Oh, anyway.
Would have been on poop control.
Yes.
Okay, let me get my composure.
Okay, sorry.
My question, you've lost some people during COVID, the public schools, or have you all?
Yes, yeah, we had, um, a huge amount go to our cyber schools. We're starting to see that come back. So, let me get my dates right, in fall of 2020, and this was one of the things that upset a lot of our, our residents is that they chose to keep us virtual, even though schools around us were all going back to school. Our school board voted to keep us virtual. And I saw the devastating effects of that in my own children. And, um, it was horrible. And so a lot of people at that point pulled their kids out of our school district and sent them to a virtual option that's been established, do you know what I mean? Like PA cyber and stuff like that. We are starting to see those kids come back to our school. We went back, uh, so last year, I want to say in like December, maybe November of 2021 is when they started going back to school and it was optional. Some kids stayed out and did virtual at home and then, but most of them came back. But this year, we did see some of the kids that opted for the virtual to come back. And I think next year you'll see the, I think we'll be back to normal enrollment next year.
Okay, okay. Well, our, our last question today has to do with what advice, now that you're on the other side of that table, you're not the parent, but you're the school board member, is when a parent sees things that cause them concern? So we're seeing a lot of, of discussion now around the nation about gender fluidity, work CRT, all of those things, you know, raise people's eyebrows and give them pause and concern. And I do want to give a shout out right now to Kathy Wallert. She is a psychologist, a grandparent and a parent who is also a school board member. And I asked her when I interviewed her, and I'm going to ask you to contribute to this, Crystal. I said, what advice would you give to parents who see things either in their kids' textbooks? Or they hear things, or they see things that makes them like wonder, you know, what's, what's happening here? What's actually being taught? And so these are the five things that she advised parents to do. Number one, do your research and don't jump to an emotional, uh, decision. Just because you saw it on TV doesn't necessarily mean it's happening in your town. So do your research, make sure that you're, you're pursuing something that's actually factual. And remember that every school board has its own rules, so you've got to know what those rules actually are. The second, uh, advice that she has is to get together with other parents, you know, other people who have the same concern. The third one was to form groups of them. And I think that happened a lot during COVID. I know I was in a Facebook group, uh, of parents wanting the kids back in school. And then, um, the fourth bit of advice, don't go to the school board screaming. That is never a good plan. And then number five, don't give up, just continue to try. So what would, what would you, what would you advise? What would you add or contribute to that?
I think that's great advice, absolutely. I know in our district, we are very big on following the chain of command. So if you see something, maybe in your child's homework or schoolbook or something that you don't like, reach out to the teacher first. Uh, you absolutely can copy the principal, the chain of command goes the teacher, the principal, then the superintendent, and then the school board. It's kind of like each, like the school board holds the superintendent, uh, accountable. And I don't think people realize this chain of command. So the superintendent, or the school board holds the superintendent, uh, accountable. Superintendent's job is to hold the principal's accountable. The principal's job is to hold the teacher's accountable. So that's the chain of command to follow. Does it hurt to copy the next, uh, person on the chain of command in the email communication? No, so then that way they have a, an idea. But the first thing I would always say is go back to the teacher. Because I think that a lot of times things are taken out of context. Um, I've seen it, I've seen it from both sides. Uh, we had an issue in our school district last, uh, two years ago and while we were on virtual and, you know, I saw both sides of it. I saw what the parent was upset with, I saw the teacher's defense and, um, I saw the way the school board handled it. And I think that they did the right thing then. Things can easily be taken out of context when you're not directly involved in it. Then I've also seen it now from the school board side, I've seen things taken out of context when you dig a little bit deeper. And so I think it's always the best bet to go directly to the source, which is the teacher. I know that the teacher appreciates that as well, but it's how you go to them, you know? Kind of like you said earlier, even though we're not supposed to be political, teachers shouldn't be either. We shouldn't know our teachers' political affiliation. And so when, let, let's just for sake of argument, let's just say it's something that is very far left-wing and you are, have very far right-wing conservative values. And you go to the teacher all up in arms over this, well, he or she is going to completely shut down and not listen to you because you guys are already
Right.
at each other's throats, you know what I mean? So you've got to go with that middle of the road and, and asking questions, not accusatory. Ask questions, be like, where were you going with this kind of teaching? What, what were you wanting from the children? Because a lot of it is just prompting our children to think for themselves. And, and getting them to question more as well, instead of telling them how they should feel, getting the kids to ask more questions. And so that's the very first thing I would say. And then if you're not happy with the teacher's answer, that's when you elevate it to the principal and, and then to the superintendent. And like I said, there's nothing wrong with copying that next level on there. I like when I, when I see what's going on. We just had a, you know, a parent that was upset over something and they copied us on it. None of us, I don't think any of us replied, but we're aware of this situation and we can watch it and see how it was developed and see how it was handled by our administration, which was really nice. Um, our superintendent followed up with us on it. So there's, it, it's just the chain of command. When you come in screaming and yelling and, and I get it, there's, there was times I tried to do that and my husband'd be like, simmer down. So, you know, it, nothing gets accomplished that way, you know? So it's, and it's the same in an email, you know? I've been calling names personally in some emails. And so, you know, when I start reading, this was over the whole masking thing, oh lord, the emails that came through. It, it was like
Right.
constant, our phones were digging. And, but when you come at me yelling and, and in all caps and calling me names, I'm going to read your email because that's what I was elected to do. I will not participate in a conversation with you though. But if you come at me and want to have a discussion, a civilized discussion, even though I know that we don't agree,
Right.
I will 100% have that conversation with you over and over and over.
Right.
But don't start calling me names.
Yeah, wow. Well, uh, you know, I think what's happened is, you know, what happened during COVID is it just sent everybody over the edge emotionally in a million different ways. That's why my first four episodes of this podcast was on mental health because clearly we have some problems there. But, uh, you know, it was interesting that you said that because, you know, the only time in my entire life that I ever carried a sign and participated in a march was because our school board voted not to let our kid go back in that classroom. And I was like, you know, even though I wasn't affected, I was like, I'm going to speak for the people who don't have the courage or whatever, this is horrific policy. And hopefully now we have learned and it's, we're going to pay a heavy price for those decisions. But you know, all these lockdowns and, and keeping kids out of the classroom and masking, this is going to have a horrible effect on children and hopefully we've learned our lesson. But in the meantime, the Crystal Bards of the world are on the school board.
Yeah.
All right, well, Crystal, anything else that you would say to my audience today before we sign out?
I would just really encourage you to get involved, whether you pay the taxes in your district or you have children in the district or both, get involved. These children need people to fight for them. I, I love, I think it was Leah who said that we need, um, how did she say it? We protect, you know, people want to protect their children, but we're trying to raise our children to fight for themselves. And I, and I love that, I absolutely love that. And there's, you know, we, we as the community, what's the, what's the saying, go, it takes a village? That's what we are, that's what the community is, it takes a village. And so we need to equip our public school system to raise our children, to go out and be their own voice, to teach them how to think for themselves and how to form their own opinions and allow them to do that and not force it down their throat one way or the other. I'm totally against that. And, um, you, you can't do that if you're not involved. When we had our COVID school board meetings, we'd have over a thousand people. There was times that we'd lock out Zoom and now there's probably five people in the room. And I know that we're not the only district like that. Get involved one way or another.
Well, Crystal, you have been a bright shiny light to my audience today and I so appreciate you. And I know that the parents and, and all of the citizens in your community are, are totally being blessed by having such a common sense voice on the board and a measured person who is going to listen and, and bring sanity to the world. And so I just, I congratulate you and, and celebrate you and, and I know our audience will as well. And our homework, everyone, from this particular episode is just to share these three episodes that we've done, which is number 18, 19, and 20, with any young parents or any grandparents as far as that goes who have concerns about their children's education. Because there is school choice now, a lot more than before. And clearly through Crystal today, you have seen that there is a way when you feel in the public school system that you don't have a voice, that you really do have a voice. And so use your voice and use it wisely. Crystal, thank you so much for being my guest here today. Cheers to you, my friend. Cheers. And you guys.
Thanks for having me.
You're more than welcome. And our next episode, episode 21, will be with my good friend, Beth Vernon. You've met her in a previous episode and she's going to share with you about her legacy grandparenting group. It's a Christian group that's involved in your churches or would like to be involved with your churches, helping grandparents see that they can be much more intentional in the spiritual upbringing of their children. So that will be our next episode on children. So in the meantime, you guys have a wonderful blessed day and Crystal and I say, adios.
Bye.